Okay. At this time, I will call this meeting to order. Clerk of the Board, would you please call the roll?
Certainly Chair Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Garrettson.
Present.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak. Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leone.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Here.
Commissioner Staton. Commissioner and Chair Vice Chair Williams.
Still here. And now Clerk of the Board, would you please lead us in the prayer and the salute to the flag?
I'm only we ask God to give her of peace and the lover of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
Right. Clerk of the Board, would you please read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Air wishes to announce pursuant to requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10 of the Open Public Meetings Act. I have been noticed of this meeting order of county commissioners, the county of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance, the newspapers circulating within the county of Union were designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the office of the county clerk.
Thank you. Good evening and welcome to another remote meeting of the Commissioner Board. My name is Rebecca Williams and I am the Vice Chair of the Union County Board of County Commissioners. As Chairman Mirabella is not with us tonight, I will be presiding over tonight's meeting. Let's start with an update on our COVID response efforts. We have mobile vaccination visiting neighborhoods throughout Union County. Free vaccines for everyone. Free vaccines are also available at our permanent clinics in Elizabeth, Union Township and Plainfield, and we also are still offering free testing. You can book an appointment at any of these sites by going online to ucnj.org/ VAX. If you need help with the online system, you can call the Union County COVID-19 Call Center at 908-613-7829 for assistance. It's simple. Now, as you know, is not the time to sit on the sidelines, time for us to step up and take action and try to get as many people vaccinated as possible. Also, if you've been impacted financially by the pandemic, please be aware that we are still continuing to distribute emergency food supplies. And earlier this month, we also launched a rental assistance program. For information about these programs and other resources, please visit us online at ucnj.org/covid19. Turning now to other matters, on behalf of the Commissioner Board, I want to thank US Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg for coming to Union County for a roundtable discussion on our infrastructure. And I would also like to thank Representative Tom Melanowski, our Congressman, who also attended. There was much to discuss, including the gateway tunnel project and the one-seat ride, which of course is of great importance to us here along the Raritan Valley Line. The Commissioner Board has spent many years advocating for these projects and we will continue to work with our local mayors, with Secretary Buttigieg and with Congressman Melanowski, keep them moving forward. Commissioner Mude will have a couple of additional notes about our rails and our transportation toward the end of the meeting. We continue to provide outdoor activities in county parks consistent with the current public health guideline during the pandemic. We strive to be inclusive. So if you are a special needs family, we have a number of really great upcoming events and activities. We'll be hosting an outdoor art project, a fishing derby, and spray park sessions for people with special needs this month. We are also gathering a contingent of Red Bulls fans for the Special Needs Night at Red Bull, Red Bull's, I'm sorry, Red Bull's Arena on Saturday, August 28th. You can visit the Office for People with Disabilities and Special Needs on the county website for more information at ucnj.org. And I would also like for everyone to know that Union County is a sponsor of the upcoming Rahway River Fest, of course, in Rahway. River Fest is a week-long series of outdoor activities from Saturday, August 21st through Saturday, August 28th, organized by the Rahway River Watershed Association. Many of the events for the Rahway River Fest will be taking place in our county parks and it looks to be a great deal of fun and we are certainly proud to support this event. You can get more details about that event from the Watershed Association at rahwayriver.org. And then finally, just a note for cultural organizations in Union County, please check with our Office of Cultural and Heritage Affairs for information about our history re-grant program. The application portal is now open and the deadline is September 15th. Fifteen. So those are all my notes for this evening. So now we can turn to the business of tonight's meeting and we will move on to resolutions from the various departments. I will start off by asking Carl Fernandez of the Union County Clerk's Office to present those resolutions.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. So we're just, we only have, I'm sorry, we only have one resolution today, demanding a contract with Royal Services because we are now printing an early voting of new law out letters and we need larger ballots to accommodate more voting places or the polling places actually. If anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Commissioners, any questions? Seeing none, we will move on. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Oh.
Oh. All right. I thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't do the official raise hand, but I just wonder if Ms. Fernandez could tell us about the sites for early voting or where people can check where the sites are?
I don't have them right in front of me. I know that they can check at the website for the Board of Elections. They have them up on their websites. And if you check on unioncountyvotes.com, you're actually, you see, unioncountyvotes.com, all the sites have been posted there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. Thank you, Commissioner Kowalski. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks again. Okay. And now we will move on to the Union County Sheriff. Sheriff Corvelli.
Good afternoon, Vice Chairwoman, Commissioners. The Sheriff's Office has one resolution on the agenda this evening for your consideration and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Colleagues, any questions for the sheriff on this resolution? Okay. Seeing none. Thank you, Sheriff. We will move on.
Thank you, ma'am.
Certainly. And Jim, can you, can you just note that Commissioner Staton has also joined us now? Thank you.
Fully noted.
Great. Okay. We'll move on to the Office of the Union County Prosecutor, Mr. William Daniel. Bill? Hello? He is still, uh, on silent. And we see that he does have two resolutions here.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Absolutely.
Start over. Let me start over. Good afternoon, Vice Chair Williams and Commissioners. Thank you very much. Yes, we have two resolutions, the first being a shared services agreement with the Essex County Prosecutor's Office for forensic laboratory services, the second being an amendment to a prior sexual assault nurse examiner's fee arrangement, increasing the amount of each fee, each exam from $60 per exam to $110 per exam. Now, with each of these resolutions, there'll be no financial impact to our county. The amendment to the nurse examiner resolution, it's a fully funded state grant. And the other, there is no financial impact at all to Union County. In fact, we benefit by some of the services provided by Essex County in exchange for their use for lab. Thank you.
Okay, great. Do any of the Commissioners have questions for Bill on either of these resolutions? Okay, looks like there are no questions. Thank you so much, Prosecutor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Sure. Okay. Next up, we have the Board of Elections. Ms. Drotto.
Good evening, Vice Chair, members of the Board. The Board of Elections has three resolutions on this evening's agenda for your consideration. Be very happy to answer any questions.
Colleagues, does anyone have any questions? Okay, I have one question just on item number two. If you can just sort of give us a little bit more background given the amount of money, et cetera, what we're doing?
So I'd be very happy to. So for the first time this year, New Jersey is offering early voting to Union County, to New Jersey voters. The law putting it into place. So this resolution, a little over $3 million with ESNS. ESNS is our current election vote tabulation system provider. So this resolution is a purchase of over 1,000 electronic poll books and 99 additional machines to be used for early voting. In addition to the early voting period, this resolution funds electronic poll books, which are to be used in every election going forward. So no longer will voters be signing in with a pen on an actual book. They're going to be signing with a stylus on a tablet.
And this will be starting with our general election?
That's correct.
Okay. And no, I don't see any hands raised. So thank you. Oh, Dr. Garrettson. You're on mute.
Thank you so much, Chairwoman. So you said that we're starting this process. How many other communities are also starting this particular with the stylus? Do you know if we're one of the first?
So this is a directive pursuant to state statute, public law, 2021, Chapter 40. So it's required statewide. Statewide is going early voting with electronic poll books. It's required pursuant to the statute that everybody comply. So we are not the first, but we are, we are in this together statewide. And Commissioner Kowalski's question from earlier.
I missed that. Pardon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, thank you so much, Ms. Drotto. And you're welcome. And then we'll move on to the Department of Administrative Services and Director Scutari. Good evening.
Good evening. The Department of Administrative Services has five resolutions on the agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Colleagues, does anyone have any questions on any of the five resolutions presented by Director Scutari? Seeing none. Thank you, Director.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to the Department of Economic Development and our Deputy County Manager.
Good evening, Commissioners. The Department of Economic Development has one resolution for your consideration and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. I see that Commissioner Granados has his hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Williams. Deputy County Manager, if you can, I know you've been doing a lot of publicity when it comes to the Emergency Rental Assistance Program, but if you can just provide further information for the residents who are tuning into that.
Absolutely. So we recently opened a portal where income-eligible residents can apply for rental assistance and landlords that also are that are back due. It provides for 12 months back and three months of prospective rent. It also provides for arrears in electric and gas bills. The portal is ucnj.org/ rental-assistance, or if they just go to the ucnj.org homepage, it will, they'll see the link right there for applying for the program. And to your point, this, we're doing TV ads, we'll be, we're on Tap into, we're doing direct mail. We've reached out. We have, we have a number of foreclosure file, excuse me, eviction filings in the county. So we've reached out to all the parties that are involved in those filings and doing everything we can to try to get the word out so that our residents are aware of the program.
Thank you, Deputy County Manager, for you and your team's work on that. Thank you, but Chair.
Thank you.
Okay. Certainly, Commissioner Granados. I see that Commissioner Leone has her hand up. You can unmute yourself and ask your question.
Yes, one quick question. This program is for both the tenant and the landlord, correct?
Yes, the landlord and the tenant must participate. We need vote, buy in from both so that we can confirm what the arrears is actually are. And the rents, the back rent gets paid directly to the landlord. Oh.
Okay. Commissioner Granados, do you have another question? No? Okay. And I will just add that I saw one of the commercials this morning. I thought it was very effective. So let's carry on with that. Great.
Thank you.
Certainly. Thank you, Deputy, Deputy County Manager. Let's see. Oh, now we come to the Department of Engineering, Public Works and Facilities Management. Director Graziano.
Evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. I have eight resolutions on this evening for your consideration. I'll try and answer any questions you have.
Okay. Let's see. Any questions for Director Graziano on these resolutions? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Director Graziano.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We will then move on to the Department of Finance. Director Taylor.
Good evening, Madam Chair. The Department of Finance has five resolutions for your consideration this evening and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions from the Board? Okay, looks like we have no questions for you. Thank you so much, Director Taylor. Now we come to the Department of Human Services. Director Anderson, good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. The Department of Human Services has six resolutions on tonight and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? Okay. I just have one. Can you just elaborate a little bit on number three, Director Anderson?
Number three, authorizing the sage elder care. It's reference to the senior health insurance benefits not to exceed $16,000 for our seniors over the age of 60.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. And yeah, have a good evening. And now we to the Department of Parks and Recreation. Director Zuber is away and it looks like Mike Brennan will be ably filling in for him.
I hope so. Good evening, Madam Chair. Commissioners, the Department of Parks and Recreation has one resolution for your consideration and I'll gladly answer any questions you may have.
Commissioners, any questions about this particular resolution? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. And we come to the Department of Public Safety. Director Moran.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the Board. Department of Public Safety has two resolutions for your consideration. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, no questions on this resolution. Can you just give a little bit of background on number two, Director Moran?
Yes, this is a local restaurant that we utilize for food for our COVID testing site as well as our vaccination site in Elizabeth. We've reached the pay-to-play threshold for that, so we need to adopt a reso so we can continue to use this local service.
Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
And now we come to the Office of the County Manager, Ed. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. I have two odds on tonight's agenda. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions for our county manager? All right. Seeing none.
Thank you.
We'll close out that part. Thank you so much, County Manager. Now we come to Commissioner sponsored resolutions. If anyone has anything to add or anyone wants to do a reso, any comments? Okay. Seeing none. Let's see. Yeah, seeing none. Okay. May I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Some move.
Okay, moved by, moved by Commissioner Granados, seconded by Commissioner Palmieri Mude. All in favor? Oh, well, actually, can we have a roll call?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Seven votes in the affirmative to adjourn this meeting.
Great. And Jim, can we move directly into the next meeting, the regular meeting?
We certainly can. Yes.
Okay, great. So we will do that and okay. So at this time, of this meeting order, Clerk of the Board is called.
Yes, Chair. Commissioner Garrettson.
Here.
Commissioner Granados.
Here.
Commissioner Hudak. Commissioner Kowalski.
Here.
Commissioner Leone.
Here.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Here.
Commissioner Staton.
Here.
Chair Williams.
Here. Okay.
Chair, you have seven Commissioners present for the regular meeting.
Great. Can you now lead us in the prayer and salute to the flag?
Well, we ask God to give her of peace and the lover of charity to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all who work for justice and peace. Amen.
And Clerk of the Board, oh, go ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. All right. Would you please now read the statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act?
Chair wishes to announce that pursuant to the requirements of the New Jersey statutes annotated Title 10, Chapter 4, Section 10, the Open Public Meetings Act had a quick notice of this meeting with the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Union has been given by mailing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021, along with periodic changes necessitated by circumstance to the newspapers circulating within the county of Union were designated to receive such notice and by posting the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 in the administration building and further by filing the annual meeting schedule for the year 2021 with the office of the county clerk.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of communications. May I have a motion to approve the communications?
Some move.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Kowalski. Second, seconded by Commissioner Palmieri Mude. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative?
Thank you. Now may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Thursday, July 22nd agenda setting session as well as the regular meeting session, the regular meeting? May I have a motion? Moved by Commissioner Leone, seconded by Commissioner Granados. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have votes in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. Now may I have a motion to suspend the rules to allow for the joining of both the public comments on resolutions being offered for adoption and the public comments on any governmental issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the county as one public comment session. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Leone.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Staton. Okay. Would you please call the roll, Jim?
Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Commissioner Granados.
Aye.
Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Commissioner Leone.
Aye.
Commissioner Palmieri Mude.
Aye.
Commissioner Staton.
Yes.
And Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in you for me.
Okay. The meeting is now open to anyone wishing to speak on resolutions being offered for adoption this evening or on any other matter. I will start by opening the meeting up to those who are joining us on our Zoom webinar. Please note that a five-minute timer will display on our live stream indicating green. At the four-minute mark, the timer display will change to yellow and then red at the five-minute mark. So Jim, can, would you please, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Chair, as of now, we have two individuals in our queue. The first individual in our queue is a Nancy Pivuar.
Okay. Thank you so much, Ms. Pivuar.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Okay, sorry.
Good evening, Nancy. Good evening. Nancy Pivuar, 1129 Myrtle Avenue, Plainfield. I appreciate the opportunity to speak in public session. My focus will be on Greenbrook Park because I've lived near this park for over 65 years. I have appeared before the county commissioners through the years advocating, expressing various concerns pertaining to Greenbrook Park such as upkeep, maintenance, trash, and historical significance. Any of my comments are not to reflect badly on the maintenance people that work there because I think they do the best job under the conditions that they are given. They're wonderful and they're always kind and respectful when I stop to talk to them. I don't know the status of the master plan for the parks. I did submit something back in March. And I also do not know the status of the negotiations with Somerset County over the lease of approximately 15 acres of land that the county in Union has had for 99 years. I'm very concerned about the status of the lease because Union County has been a steward of that portion of the park for almost a century. Some people may say that the county has done nothing, but in my humble opinion, leaving it the way it has been for over 100 years wasn't is the best way to take care of that portion of the land. I say that because it is a sacred land where indigenous people are buried. There were studies done back in the 1920s and '30s and that portion has never been disturbed. I am very concerned that if the lease is not continued, that it could lead to development of land that needs to remain urban wilderness. Birds, animals migrate there, just like the Native Americans did centuries ago. There is a spirit in the land and that is why the hawks, eagles, and other species of bird build nests in the area. There's a great group of people that go down there and watch the migrating birds all the time. The separation of that 15-acre portion from the main portion could jeopardize the national register status of the Greenbrook Park and possibly jeopardize future funding opportunities. I drive through the park numerous times. Greenbrook Park is the most historic of all the county parks in Union County. It is hallowed ground. At the 250th anniversary of the Revolutionary War, Greenbrook Park needs major restoration and preservation. Greenbrook Park could be the shining star for the county during the 250th anniversary coming up in 2026. Greenbrook Park was the site of the Blue Hills Militia Post and encampment and was used during the Battle of Short Hills and other military maneuvers throughout the American Revolution. In September 1782, it probably served as a campsite for Lejeune's Legion, the French Legion, as part of Washington-Rochelle Blow Trail. This area that encompasses Greenbrook Park was later purchased by the United States government to be used during the French naval wars and at least three measurements were stationed there and later it became a stop on the Swiftshore stage route between Philadelphia and New York. The separation of that 15-acre portion from the main portion could jeopardize the national register status of the Greenbrook Park and possibly jeopardize future funding opportunities. I drive through the park numerous times. Greenbrook Park is the most historic of all the county parks in Union County. It is hollow ground. In light of the 250th anniversary of the Revolutionary War, Greenbrook Park needs major restoration and preservation. Greenbrook Park could be the shining star for the county during the 250th anniversary coming up in 2026. Greenbrook Park was the site of the Blue Hills Militia Post and encampment and was used during the Battle of Short Hills and other military maneuvers throughout the American Revolution. In September 1782, it probably served as a campsite for Lejeune's Legion, the French Legion, as part of Washington-Rochan-Blow Trail. This area that encompasses Greenbrook Park was later purchased by the United States government to be used during the French naval wars, and at least three measurements were stationed there, and later it became a stop on the Swift Shore stage route between Philadelphia and New York. There's a core group of volunteer historians who are researching the Revolutionary War and quasi-war aspects of this area, and we're looking for the lost part of the Plainfield. Just this week, we've been able to locate the deeds, and hopefully, within the next month or so, we'll have a better idea exactly where the encampment and fort were. Um, the efforts of these students that I've been working with and the group that I've been working with, we were able to get the National Washington-Rochan-Blow Revolutionary Route Association to change the location of Lejeune's Legion's campsite to Plainfield. Originally, it was listed as Scotch Plains because Scotch Plains was the mailbox stop during the 1800s. Recently, a newspaper article and a diary were found that noted that there are surge soldiers buried in the vicinity of Greenbrook Park. The location and burial ground are unknown. The soldiers who died there died from disease and were buried in shallow graves along the roads or in swamps or even in the wells. During the time that this area was used as a militia post, African-Americans freed and enslaved, played a role in supplying the post. Historical figures who visited this area included George Washington, Alexander Hamilton, Abigail Adams, and others. Uh, Greenbrook Park, as I mentioned before, was a site, was a winter site for the indigenous people who came inland during bad weather prior to the colonial times. And there is a Native American burial site within the boundaries of Greenbrook Park according to old research documents. In 1954, a Native American skeleton was found on Myrtle Avenue just outside the park boundaries, and I think that's the area where the soldier's burial ground still is. There are no signs marking this hollow ground, and all of this information is going to be explored by this small group of people, but I'm really concerned about the lease agreement because I would hate to see that it could impact any of the future funding opportunities that the county, the city, or the state could have under the American Battlefield Protection Program. And I really appreciate your time and about this, and I wanted to give you an update. Like I said, we just recently found the original deeds that Thomas Jefferson signed and James Madison signed, and I have a student from NJIT who is currently working on trying to put those deeds on a current-day map in order to finally, finally find the fourth. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Puevar. Can we have, let's see, Ron is not here. I know that that lease is coming due. Is there any comment, County Manager, or Mike, that we can make about this?
Vice Chair, for the lease, I'd probably defer to County Council. Mike can talk, play on what the timeframe is on that. They're in the process.
Okay, County Council?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The negotiations between the county and the owner of the land are ongoing. I don't have an up-to-date report, but I certainly can get that out to the commissioners in the next day or two, just to let you know exactly where we are. As far as I know, we have not yet come to an agreement on extending that lease.
Okay.
Well, we're certainly trying.
Thank you so much. And yes, thank you for keeping us updated. We'll look forward to that. Okay, Jim, you mentioned that there was one additional person in the queue?
Chair, yes, is Mr. Bruce Patterson.
Okay, Mr. Patterson, the floor is yours. Hello? I thought I saw Mr. Patterson a moment ago.
You may have just got disconnected.
Okay, it looks like he's coming back, so we'll just give him a moment. To log on again. Okay. Just give him a moment. Um. Let's see. I'm not seeing Mr. Pat. Oh, here he is. Okay. Mr. Patterson, the floor is yours.
That is just his video source. He has not called back in.
Oh, okay. Well, then, in that case, if he has not called back in, Jim, do you have comments from Mr. Patterson?
Chair, yes, I do. He did submit some comments in the event he couldn't join us or this case has been disconnected. So if you'd like, you can certainly read that into the record verbatim.
Yes, please.
Okay, just give me one moment to pull it up.
Okay.
Because it was an email.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. You may begin.
Attention Jim Pelletieri, Clerk of the County Commissioner Board, from Mr. Bruce Patterson Garwood. In case I can't participate by phone, here are some questions and comments to be emailed and read into the record. Evening, ladies and gentlemen, Dr. Garrettson and the Commissioner Board. This is Bruce Patterson, Garwood, New Jersey. Resolution 2021-599, this reso is for 3.5 million to GEO reentry for three months for substance abuse program for inmates, was already approved in July via reso 2021-540. Why the duplicate resolution? Riso 2021-603, this reso switches names on a program for providing medical billing and collection. Now Corona's Health, what happened? Riso 2021-604, this reso is having John's Cafe provide food to the COVID testing sites, but the amount is unknown. Riso 2021-607, this resolution is a state grant for 3.4 million to cover Union County Board of Ed voting, EV equipment, and warehouse rental. What details are we spending this money on? Riso 2021-608, this reso has the county receiving $100,000 for infrastructure grant, infrastructure fund grant. Is this being added to the roughly 13 million pot of Ronald's money we are using? Riso 2021-615, this reso is adding more money for Neta Architects for architectural services for the stairwell project where his contract now totals nearly 5 million. The stairwell project is going on 11 years and became such a boondoggle such as such of waste of taxpayers' money, allowing the contractors and professionals such as Neta Architects with his 5 million bloated bill to get needlessly rich on taxpayers' dime. From this fiasco, I have sinking feeling that the 125 million upcoming government complex will be four times worse since no one involved in the county end actually has any experience with such a large project. The stairwell project has a line item number of 2010-033C. My question on this line item is, does this capture all costs involved in the project so the public can see just how much it costs? Riso 2021-617, this reso is the start to the Rails to Trails program, giving Remington and Vernick $100,000 for a feasibility study. Will this account number listed 2021-005 be the account all expenses will accrue so the public can see the costs? By the way, Remington Vernick has donated $20,000 in the last 40 years to your cronies' political campaigns. Riso 2021-624, this reso is giving permission to AT&amp;T Telecommunications to install test wells in the Clark Reservoir. What exactly is being planned with this? Riso 2021-628, back in December, where reso's totaling around 5 million for election items. Here is another 3 million to E S and S for a grand total of 8 million for elections. Does anyone really have a grasp of what is being spent on elections? This total is out of this world. We are back to in-person elections, so why so much apparent waste? Riso 2021-629, this reso is paying $318,000 to the Liberty Group for leasing warehouse space in Berkeley Heights for two years for election equipment. Who are the principles of liberty? And where is this warehouse? Why kind of secure? What kind of security are they offering if it's our voting machines? Riso 2021-630, this reso is an addition of $82,000, which now totals 3.1 million to Royal Printing. However, in March, there was a reso 2021-204 that added 89,000. If it became all vote by mail, which did not occur, I would like to see a change order deleting the 89,000 to avoid any overbilling or abuse. This goes back to my comment of an unheard sum of $8 million allocated towards our elections. Riso 2021-636, this reso is getting a total of $200,000 to Samuel's Inc. to the cooperative purchasing vendors list. What products does this company handle that we need? Riso 2021-639 and 642, these resos are approving a collective bargaining agreement with local 649 and 199. Please provide the public with the details that were agreed. Riso 2021-641, this reso is approving appointments to the CIA. However, moving forward, John Burry or myself would graciously accept an appointment to the CIA. Since you are fully aware, we express analytical and investigational skills towards addressing costs and expenditures. Union County Government Complex is moving forward again. This is on any matter, I presume. The Union County Government Complex is moving forward again based on public need and expiration leases. However, during bidding, the process got so screwed up with so many loose ends that.
Time, time.
Yeah, it's just one more sentence.
Oh, I.
Yeah.
I apologize, but I did close out the email.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you, Jim. Thank you, Mr. Patterson, for your comments. And let's see, we'll start with, and I, you know, the numbers may have shifted a little since Mr. Patterson sent them in, but let's see, we have one for the sheriff on the GEO reentry.
Through you, Vice Chair. We adjusted the number. It's a three-month extension for GEO that treats our residential drug and alcohol for our inmates. It's not to exceed 875, 875,000, and the contract ends September 30.
Thank you so much. Chair, if I could just address Mr. Patterson's other point that this was voted on. It's a July meeting. It was not. He commented on it, and I explained to him at that time that it had been pulled from the agenda, from that agenda. So this is the first time it's being voted on.
Okay, thank you so much. Thanks for that clarification. Okay, next, let's see, there were two questions for public safety?
Director Murray? Yes, through you, Chair. We entered into an agreement with Revenue Guard in April, in May of this year, and since then, they were acquired by a new company, and this reso is reflective of new name for Revenue Guards. And number two was probably updated since Mr. Patterson saw it on the website, and the amount is not to exceed $25,000.
Right. Okay, thank you, Director Murray.
Thank you.
Okay, there were several questions covering the Board of Elections, and I guess one of the questions had to do with the printing as well, but perhaps. Administ, perhaps Director DiRado might be able to answer all of those, and perhaps Ms. Fernandez can answer number 630, but if Director DiRado can kind of fold all of these in, I'm sure she's familiar with that as well.
I certainly can, Vice Chair. Thank you. With, of course, the exception of the resolution being presented by the County Clerk's Office for Royal Printing. The Union County Board of Elections was awarded a grant award over $3.4 million for the purchase of additional voting equipment, including electronic poll books required by statute in order to effectuate early voting and electronic poll book sign-in for voters starting in the general election 2020. Now, the Board of Elections is going to be taking possession of over 1,300 new pieces of equipment. We have nowhere in our current space of footprint to put this. So part of that $3.4 million award was an award, excuse me, for $318,600 to lease just about 5,000 square foot, 5,000 square feet of warehouse and office space to be able to store, program, maintain our new fleet of electronic poll books, which will be rolled out countywide. And actually statewide in this upcoming general election.
Okay, okay. Did you, let's see, there was a question about the warehouse space. There was, okay, I think that was, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm sorry. So in terms of the security, we are certainly working with our new landlord on security measures for the facility, which will be in place before we accept delivery of the voting machine. However, we're not going to disclose what those security measures are. I believe that would.
Compromise security.
But the public can rest assured that we take security of our elections infrastructure very seriously.
Thank you. Thank you, Director DiRado.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Sure. And then there was, you know, the reso 630, Ms. Fernandez, that was sort of a comment on 82,000 versus an old reso that was for 89,000.
Yes, the 89,000 that Mr. Patterson refers to were from back in March, they were used to print applications because we had to be ready should we go to vote by mail. We did not go to vote by mail, but we did purchase them. We do have them, and if nothing changes in the law or in trend, then we should have enough for about the next two years.
Great. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, and then, let's see, Director Taylor, there was a question about the infrastructure grant, fund grant.
Or through you, Madam Chair. Resolution 2021-608 is in fact actually a DOT grant for local aid infrastructure. It is not the same as the county infrastructure program not tied to the Ronald's revenue.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Okay, Director Graziano, reso 615, there was a question?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair. 615, I think his question was, does this capture all costs involved in the projects so the public can see just how much it costs? Does this, this, this does capture all the cost for Neta Architects, 4.9 something million dollars overall? The speaker made a, made a reference to this project lasting so long, and I don't know if, if the board remembers that this, this project was born in 2010. Basically, that's when the state violated us for not having another stairwell. We had to build the family court before we could start this project. So that, that got done. This, this project actually started in March or April, I believe, of 2018. We're on, you know, we're on course to finish this project, completed by the end of January of '22. So it's right around the corner. The stairwell's mostly in. We have some more floors to do. So it's, it's, it's going very well, and this is just for, there was an increase in his, his, his costs due to some unforeseen conditions with the structural steel, steel with, with COVID delays and stuff like that. So we are on board with that. His next comment was on the next agenda item, I believe, 617. Uh, for Remington Vernick. This is a fully grant-funded, and that's not an account number that he's referencing. That's a engineering project number, 2020-05. And yes, that will be the, that number will be tracking the whole project if and when we actually construct this, this Rails to Trails project.
Thanks so much, Director Graziano.
You're welcome, Madam Chair.
Okay, and then, Mike, reso 624 about the, the testing of the wells at the Clark Reservoir.
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe the question, what is, what is being planned? This is unrelated to any Union County project. It has to do with the environmental cleanup of AT&amp;T's property on Terminal Avenue. As part of their remediation plan, the DP requires a testing wells to be set up off-site. So these are just testing wells to make sure that there is no contamination spreading from that site.
Okay, thanks so much, Mike. Okay, and let's see, reso 630. Okay, and uh, let's see, um, reso six-thirty-six, uh, Director Scatari. There, there was a question about Samuel's?
Good evening. Uh, Samuel's is a vendor that our Division of Motor Vehicle uses. They're a full-service auto and truck parts vendor.
Okay, great. And let's see, the other two resos had to do with um, Locals four-sixty-nine and one-ninety-nine. County Manager, um, you want to just make a Jim comment about that?
Uh, sure. The one-ninety-nine is a six-month contract. It contains our standard two percent increase. It cleans up language, changing the uh, Department of Corrections to movement in jail. Excuse me, under the Sheriff's Office. And it all also eliminates Lincoln's birthday as a holiday and move and uh, incorporates Juneteenth. For the Teamsters, it's a two-year contract that has the same uh, Lincoln's birthday, Juneteenth provisions, and the same two percent increase.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. And then the, the last resolution uh, had did was sort of a general comment offering the Speaker's um, um, I guess, skills uh, to join the UCIA if there is an open appointment for himself and/or John Berry. Um, so we'll take that under advisement. Um, Jim, are there any other um, uh, comments that have come in or that came in?
Chair, no, I did not receive any other comments to be read into the record. And there are no one, no other uh, members of the public registered for uh, tonight's or in the queue for tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. So noting that there are no other comments, I will formally close this portion of the meeting and ask to have a motion to adopt resolutions uh, two-thousand-twenty-one-dash-five-ninety-nine through two-thousand-twenty-one-dash-six-four-six. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Kowalski. And I heard a second from Commissioner Paul Mary Muddad. Um, Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Garrettson.
Yes.
Mr. Granados.
abstained on twenty-two-one-dash-six-one-two. I to the rest.
Just for the record, is six-one-two?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Kowalski.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Mary Muddad.
Aye.
Mr. Staton.
Yeah.
Chair Williams.
Aye.
Chair, you have seven votes in the affirmative on all resolutions with the exception of twenty-two-one-dash-six-one-two. We have six votes in the affirmative and one abstention.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, and, and I guess now we're at the point where we have uh, Commissioner reports or comments. And I will go in the order, as Chairman always says, in which I see you all. Uh, Commissioner Leon.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna bank my time today.
Okay, thank you so much. Commissioner Staton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have no comments at this time. I'll bank my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Garrettson.
Thank you. My time.
Thank you, Doctor. Uh, let's see, Commissioner Granados.
Just one comment. It was great to be alongside so many female Commissioners holding up the torch for our, my fellow males on the Commissioner Board. That's it.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Uh, Commissioner Kowalski.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I just want to uh, bring up uh, an issue uh, out in the natural world about the spotted lanternfly. A number of people have been seeing them uh, on their property and in other places. And this insect is very invasive. It's a, it's a non-native insect that can uh, destroy uh, parts of our habitat. So uh, we recommend that if you see the spotted lanternfly, it's, they're um, they're fairly large bugs with uh, white wings that with black spots on them and also red accents. Uh, if you see these insects, uh, we advise you to kill them. And uh, if you see a lot of them on your property, don't try to uh, get rid of them with the home remedies. It's best to call in a licensed professional to handle them. Uh, but we also would like you to report any, any of these uh, lanternflies that you see to NJ.gov slash agriculture. Or you can go to ucnj.org slash uh, green hyphen connection. So uh, that's it for me, Chairman, and thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Kowalski. And let's see, finally, we have Commissioner Paul Mary Muddad.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I am not gonna bank my time today. Um, I just wanted to um, quickly mention um, how much we appreciated having Congressman Tom Melanowski and Secretary Buttigieg at uh, in Westfield earlier this week advocating for improving the railway infrastructure in and around Union County. Um, it was a great opportunity, myself and um, our Chairman Al Mirabella, as well as Commissioner Kowalski, was there along with many of our um, other elected officials throughout Union County and Somerset County. Um, and it's great to see that some of the efforts that have been going on for many, many years, advocating for many, many years, may soon be coming to uh, fruition. So we look forward to uh, seeing some improvements and, and, you know, po- the possibility of the Gateway Tunnel, one-seat ride uh, happening. Uh, I'd also like to thank Kennelworth's, Kennelworth's Mayor Linda Karlovich, as well as Roseau Park Mayor Joe Signorella III, and our lo- local advocates for working with us to explore the possibility of creating a new pedestrian and bike path in Union County. Uh, just a little bit about that, the new bike path would run for three uh, and a half miles along in unused and overgrown train tracks between Cranford and Elizabeth. Uh, the New Jersey Department of Transportation has provided a grant of a hundred and, one-hundred thousand dollars to support the Rails to Trails feasibility study for this project. New paths for bicycling and walking would offer an alternative commuting uh, in Union County. Um, and it would also provide a unique new recreational opportunity for our surrounding towns. And also, of course, would support local redevelopment efforts. Uh, so we're looking forward to seeing that study begin. And as we get more updates on that, we will share that with our uh, community. And I also attended the Boxwood Learning uh, Grad- Center graduation today where we had seven uh, Union County students graduate. And as I've said earlier, I know a lot of us attended other graduation ceremonies. This one was on Zoom, but not everyone's educational path looks the same. And it's really wonderful to see uh, students that had, may have been derailed at some point in time able to complete their degrees and pursue higher education um, as well as other opportunities for uh, learning and, and employment. So uh, it was really wonderful to hear their stories and I congratulate them. And that is it. Uh, Commissioner Granados, I also noted that before that you were the sole male Commissioner tonight. So uh, I think we did a good job keeping you in check. Have a good night.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Paul Mary Muddad. Um, and now I, uh, I, if there's nothing further, I think I made all my comments at the very beginning. Um, I hope everyone has a good rest of the month and that you um, also should note that there are cooling centers throughout uh, the county um, off the senior centers, et cetera. So check in your municipality um, uh, as we try to move out of this heat wave. I think we have one more, hopefully just one more day of it. Um, things may cool down, uh, start cooling down tomorrow evening. Um, so now may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay. All right. Moved by Commissioner Paul Mary Muddad and seconded by Commissioner Granados. Um, may I have a roll call, Jim?
Certainly, Chair. Commissioner Garrettson.
Yes.
Mr. Granados.
Aye.
Mr. Kowalski.
Yes.
Mr. Leon.
Aye.
Mr. Paul Mary Muddad.
Aye.
Mr. Staton.
Yes.
And Chair Williams.
Yes.
Aye.
Chair, there are seven votes for moving up at the meeting. I'm, I'm gonna go.
I'm, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll see that. Look, I'm sorry, Jim, you said?
Chair, uh, you have seven votes in the affirmative to adjourn this meeting.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, uh, everyone. It is six-oh-four. See you soon. Bye-bye.
Bye.